I call to order the Bergen Community College Board Trustees Meeting, dated today, Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Maria, please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
Yes, Madam Chair. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by an annual notice, including the date, time, and place of this meeting, posted in the first-floor main lobby of the Pittkin Education Center of Bergen Community College, and was mailed to the record in the Herald News and was filed with the Clerk of the County of Bergen, November 24th, 2021.
Thank you. Maria, please take roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Secretary Beretta.
Here.
Chairperson Blakesley.
Here.
Trustee Delicio.
Here.
Treasurer Fletcher.
Here.
Trustee Longo. He's participating by phone this evening. Trustee Morales Diaz.
Here.
Trustee Paulino.
I'm here.
Trustee Ranjan. Vice Chairman Silverstein is absent tonight. Alumni trustee you. President Friedman.
Here.
And our legal counsel, Mrs. Judy Verone.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will now take reports. Does the secretary have the report? Trustee Beretta.
Pardon me. Yes, I just wanted to thank Dr. Friedman, Dr. Larry Levinka, and the entire staff for an amazing graduation. It was spot-on. The technology they used to scan and read the names blew my mind because I was wondering who was reading the names and how they knew who these people were as they were coming. But it was excellent all the way around. And, you know, Carol, Maria, and just always, just super professional, well-done, and a beautiful day. And it was so diverse and so beautiful to see people of all ages, race, creed, crossing the stage with a giant smile. It was just wonderful. So it was wonderful to be there that day.
Terrific. Thank you, Trustee Beretta. Does the treasurer have a report? Trustee Fletcher?
Just two quick items, and then when we have our committee reports, there'll be a couple other. I wanted to report that earlier today, I had the pleasure of attending the Bergen County Valedictorian Breakfast, which is where we celebrate the valedictorians of all of the high schools in Bergen County. And our featured speaker was Dr. Eric Friedman.
Yes.
Who said nothing that anyone really will remember.[190.26][190.26](Laughter) Except he was an endless shill for the benefits of Bergen Community College. So thank you very much for that.[198.34][198.34](Applause). Actually, he did a very nice job welcoming the students and supporting Bergen Community College. And then, secondly, I'd just like to extend my thanks to the faculty senate for inviting us to the luncheon. Dottie and I attended earlier in the, I guess it was in May that we attended it. Thank you very much for that honor.
Okay. Does the president have a report?
I do, Madam Chair. Welcome, everyone. Firstly, I'd like to thank the trustees, especially our treasurer and chair of our finance committee, Patrick Fletcher. This was not scripted. The finance office and everyone who played a part in developing our 2223 budget, it was unanimously approved by the county commissioners last week. And I am so very happy for the support at the county level, especially from our county executive, Jim Tedesco, who takes such deep pride in all that we do to serve the community. What a joy to celebrate that commencement. Wow. My first live and in-person ceremony, and it's our first on the ground since 2019. What a ceremony it was. We've returned stronger than ever with new innovations, such as the social stream and graduate profiles. And it was remarkable to see every student stay until the end of the ceremony, an element we prioritized. The work of our volunteers, the promise of $500 foundation scholarships helped to make those students staying a reality. And it truly warmed my heart to see the incredible mosaic of diversity of our graduates and to observe such a professional, well-run ceremony. We're all very proud to the entire team that made the day possible and all those who crossed the stage. I'd also like to recognize graduate Christopher Gogliardi, who has attended tonight's meeting with his mother, Linda. I had the pleasure of having coffee and a chat with Chris before commencement and truly enjoyed the experience. Chris had some wonderful things to say about the college, and I was moved by his remarks. He began at the college more than 20 years ago and became a Bergen graduate this year. Chris, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, President Freeman. Words alone cannot say how grateful I am to Bergen. This is a citadel of education for the people of Bergen and the world. The teachers here are far above the call of duty that they have put in their heart and soul, their blood, their sweat, their tears, even during the darkest of times, which is Even the parents, like my mother over here, who had to give her sacrifice with her body and mind to see that I come through. And because of her advocating and because of my advocating, Bergen is now a light for future generations to come. Why did I come back to Bergen? Because Bergen is where the future leaders are. It is we, the youth of America and the world, who will change this country for the better. My mentor once said that a great human revolution in one single individual, just one, will help achieve a change in the destiny of an entire nation and further will help achieve a change in the destiny of the entire human race. That was written by a philosopher and a peace advocate by the name of Daisaku Ikeda, who was the author of The Human Revolution. If the teachers can be the change for our young people, then the power of youth can change America, Bergen County, and the world. Dr. Freeman, members of the trustees, and members of Bergen Community College, I can proudly report, you have not only changed my life, but the lives of so many young people. And this past Sunday, we made history together, as you will see in the pictures and reports that I have submitted to Dr. Levinka and the others in the next edition of the Bergen Newsletter. But I will keep my brief short and have my mother come on up, come on up, say a few words as well, because she feels from her life, as I do, how blessed Bergen has been to me and to her.
Damn.[497.02][497.02](Applause). It's very hard for me to speak unemotionally, because you all have changed his life. When I raised Christopher, I never even imagined this was possible, never, from any point of view. When he started using his own words, when he was 16-years-old, and not repeat what he knew to repeat, never in my wildest dream would I ever think that I would be at his graduation. And that all you people changed this place so much for Christopher, for all the children like himself, because he wasn't emotionally equipped yet when he was 21. But we worked on that, and then you finished it. And I really, really appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.[571.16][571.16](Applause).
Reading adjourned.
How do you continue? But we will. All right. Oh, sorry. I apologize. Dr. Friedman, please continue.
I just want to echo what Lou Delicio said at the valedictorian event this morning for the high schools, that, you know, the parents are so important, so very, very, very important, by instilling good values and being that support network. So thank you for being there for Chris. Thank you. Speaking of graduates and following in the footsteps of 16 Bergen alum, four class of 2022 graduates have earned the most prestigious honor for junior college students, the Jack Kent Cook Scholarship. The award provides up to $55,000 per year for transfer. Graduates Bertilla Bruca, Eduardo Hernandez, Leslie Yuki, and alumni trustee Crystal Yu became the latest Cook Scholars. Thank you to trustee Delicio for thinking of me for the special honor of being the keynote at the valedictorian breakfast this morning. It was inspirational. Seeing all those ambitious, hard-working, eager valedictorians was amazing and a little bit intimidating.[682.32][682.32](Laughter). Having the student parents in the audience was the perfect touch. And yes, I shamelessly promoted the transformative educational experience available at BCC, even if it's just for summer classes. We continue our work with the prestigious Aspen Institute, and our next deliverable is our vision plan, including specific goals for transforming our transfer services. Too few of our transfer students actually complete their bachelor's degree within a six-year timeframe, and there is much work to be done more in the coming months. Last month, the Bergen Community College Foundation sponsored two events that served as capstones for the year. The first recognized donors to the foundation and welcomed me as the college's eighth president. Donors mingled with faculty and staff over hors d'oeuvres and entertainment before totally overwhelming me with a "this is your life" type of celebration of my early presidency. I was touched by what the government officials, foundation board members, trustees, and friends said, and I enjoyed using the newly recast presidential mace and hand-stitched soul that were given to me as gifts. Perhaps more than any moment, though, perhaps more than any other moment, though, when foundation board of directors, Chair Dan Foley, David Ross, and Vincent Durante each made $25,000 gifts to the college, I remained at a loss for words. I thank the foundation for its work in creating a truly memorable moment for the college and for my life and career. And the morning after the reception, the foundation hosted its scholarship awards ceremony, delivering an average of $1,300 to 540 student scholarship recipients. That's amazing and significant. We've taken numerous steps to reverse the COVID-induced enrollment decline that has affected community colleges across the country. I'm proud to say that these initiatives are seeing results, as both summer and fall enrollments remain up year over year over last year. We've had well-attended open houses, positive publicity from events such as the recent First Lady's Visit. We've had visibility on our tuition debt relief program, our latest summer back-on-track tuition assistance program, and you can see a sign out on Paramus Road for our Inflation Busters Tuition Rollback to 2019 Tuition. We're seeing strong growth in our new student population, and this bodes well for the future. I'm happy to say that our president's Advisory Council on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Campus Climate Survey received nearly 2,000 responses from students, faculty, and staff. This is very encouraging and shows that this community really cares. It's not a journey. There's no quick fix or one-off, and we'll keep this DEI work front and center. From here, we plan to identify items that could be improved in the short term, develop a first-year DEI action plan, and follow through and communicate results to you. And tonight, we take a major step forward for our Center for Online Learning by approving the partnership with Canvas, our best-in-class learning management system for higher education virtual learning. We arrived at this decision through demos, feedback sessions, and input from dozens of faculty and staff. The buy-in was really critical, and I'd like to also recognize Bergen County government and the federal government, who have helped provide funding to launch the campus transition. The same way that I expect our physical spaces to be maintained and excellent, Canvas represents a high-end virtual platform and a great space for virtual learning. I look forward to the rollout this fall. And lastly, I'd like to recognize the many new full-time faculty that the board will officially hire and prove tonight. This historic class of faculty members represents our strategic decision to continue to support really strong teaching and learning. And a reminder to trustees, the board retreat will take place Thursday, August 25th, from 9:30 to 12:00, with a lunch from 12:00 to 1:00 in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Friedman. Now we'll move on to committee reports. Audit Finance, trustee Fletcher?
Two items, please. The first is that the Audit Finance Committee met on May 23rd and are prepared to recommend resolutions AF1 through 21. And then, secondly, just to point out again, I, as well as Secretary Beretta, chairperson Blakesley, and Wilton Thomas Hook were in person representing the college. Dr. Friedman, pardon? Dr. Friedman was virtually representing the college at the Board of School Estimate on June 1st. I believe that we were welcomed warmly, and I believe that we also were able to show just how much Bergen Community College is, fits, if you will, the dynamic of the county itself. I'd also like just to throw out a special shout-out to Wilton Thomas Hook for preparing a wonderful presentation that was accepted wholeheartedly by the Board of School Estimate.
Thank you very much, trustee Fletcher. Education and Student Affairs, trustee Beretta?
Yes. The ESA Committee met on May 24th and were prepared to recommend ESA 1 to 3. I also wanted to add on to what trustee Fletcher just said. At the Board of School Estimates, it was a wonderful presentation. Wilton did an amazing job putting it together. But I also want to make mention that, as Dr. Friedman presented and stated his, you know, a lot of the goals that he has set forth the past year, I have to say, you had to see just the look on the commissioners' faces as we went through the list, and they were super impressed by the work, what he said, he's backed up. And I'm not just saying it because I'm here in front of him, but it's the honest-to-God truth. It's hard to, you know, just be able to say that you want to do something and actually pull it off, especially during the times that we're in. So I want to thank you, because as I told them that day, there's been a change, a great change, and it's a pleasure to be here and see you go to work and do the things that you do and all the time that you put in. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Beretta. Personnel report, please. Trustee Morales Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Personnel Committee met on May 24th, and we are ready to recommend P1A to P9 and all of the amendments.
Thank you, trustee Morales Diaz. Site and Facilities report, trustee Lou Delicio.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The Site and Facilities Committee met on May 23rd and recommends resolution SF1 this evening.
Thank you, trustee Delicio. Alumni trustee report, please. Trustee Yu.
So I'm going to welcome Justin from SGA, who wanted to talk about the club bill and share a video.
My name is Justin Diaz. I was the SGA vice president of the 2021 to 2022 year. So I just wanted to take some time to recognize just what the accomplishments of what the SGA has accomplished this past year. So this wasn't an easy year. We have transitioned from online classes to in-person classes, and it was really difficult trying to manage that, trying to help the student body, and trying to get things done. So, but I'm proud to say that we really prevailed under these circumstances. And I want to take time to recognize my fellow executive board members of the past year, which was President Christina Finey-Ron, Treasurer Amanda Calleza, Chief Justice Sultan Kaloon, and Executive Secretary Shana Azrafik. And I also want to take time to recognize the new incoming E-Board, which is President Taylor Lee White, Vice President Amanda Calleza, and Chief Justice Yoav Aharon, and then Executive Secretary Victoria Jangarun. So I wanted to start off by showing what I've been working on, and this is a BCC Tour video.
Hi, guys. Welcome back to BCC Tours, and today we're exploring the Student Leadership Commons, which is located in L 127. The Student Leadership Commons are open from 9:00 to 5:30, Monday to Friday, so follow along to see if you can get there.[1273.08][1273.08](Music)[1274.08][1274.08](Laughter). The Student Leadership Commons is a creative space for individuals to become the best version of themselves. Students can always do work at the designated cubicles here. Once students finish all their work, they can take it easy in the lounge area. The Leadership Commons offers a ton of great boardrooms they can enjoy with friends or even strangers. You can always hold your club meetings here at the Leadership Commons. In this corner is where you can find all the supplies you might need to host a club meeting or event, so follow along. Any supplies you might ever need, such as a poster or even a table fog, can always be found here, so make sure to stop by. Thanks for watching BCC Tours. See you in the next video.
Would you take a test on Powerwall? (Applause).
So the reason I started this video series, one of the biggest complaints or one of the biggest feedback from students is that they don't know how to get to places. So my first idea was that just a first-person perspective video, starting from the entrance of the building, learning how to navigate around campus. But then I had one of my senators, Peter, and then my, in the public relations chair, Peter Petrowski, and then Ian Sanchez, and John Caminero, and others, senators. They came up with the idea of making it interactive, where they tell you information about the popular locations all around campus. Some people asked me, like, what is a popular place I can just hang out and meet new people, hang out with friends? And then I was really overjoyed when Peter and Ian came up with the idea of trying to take it to the next level. And so I was really blessed to have a really great public relations team, so thank you, Peter.[1407.74][1407.74](Applause). And I'm really proud to say that this helped inspire a STEM project I'm working on with, actually Peter right now, which is our Bergen Ross video. So it's a web application. So that was often, I knew that I couldn't make every single video, starting from the beginning of, like, the entrance of the building to getting to every single part of campus. It just wasn't feasible. But then this team, led by Ohad Farqah, she came with the idea that by using, I don't want to reveal too much, but just using 360-degree cameras, taking pictures all around the campus. And then instead of having to start all the way from the entrance of the building, people can have, like, a certain place, people could probably take a picture of a QR code. So from any location, they can get to navigate themselves to all parts of campus. So I'm just really proud of myself, and I think it helps inspire other students that one idea can lead to another idea. I started with this very practical idea, but just getting a first perspective video wasn't, it wasn't anything exciting. But then I had my other senators try to make, try to expand it to the next level, and now here we are. And then I'm really excited to see where this will go. And this is something I wish I had when I first started this as a student. I wish I knew every single information. And so this is why I'm recommending that you guys invest in broadcasting students. One of the biggest issues is about lack of equipment for students. A lot of students don't have the money or resources to do so. And I spoke about this with Professor Hemstree, that we can't really use, allocate these equipment for students who just learn how to use this equipment right after they took a class for it. So this is a recommendation I'm making. I also want to speak about the club bill. So the club bill, this is something I've been working on, or this is something I've had an idea for the entire time. So when I first started having my Senate meetings, what I would do is I would invite all the club leaders, or anyone who's affiliated with any part of campus, try to come to my meetings, and then do, give, like, short introduction or short, like, updates on what their club is doing. So this is why I created up with the club bill. So our SGA meetings are generally from 12:30 to 1:30 on Wednesdays. I thought it's completely feasible that once a month that all the club leaders can come together. And what's exciting about that is that it's a student-run meeting. So it's something so much of this, where you have the PTK, you have myself, and then you have the STEM club members, basically give an update to everyone that's sitting here, what's going on. And I think President Taylor Lee was probably the co-sponsor of this bill. She helped me write this bill. And now I'm really excited to see what's going to go on for the next year. Basically, hopefully, and this is why I spoke about this here, is that I would like to personally invite all of you to come, to basically see what's going on, what the student body is advocating for, what they're working on, so everybody knows what's going on in campus. I don't think it's feasible that there's one meeting where all the students can come, but if there's a way that club leaders, all the club leaders can come, and then they can bring this information back to everyone else. So I don't want to take up too much time, but I just wanted to say, this was probably the first leadership position, real leadership position I had, basically really taking, having a high position of overseeing everything. It's a major difference just working on your own projects, but then it's a bigger thing, overseeing everybody else's projects. And that's something that inspired me, like, I knew if I, it just gave me the motivation to wake up every single day, because if I don't do so, nobody, if I don't take the initiative to do certain things, I can't rely on other people to do the same. Nobody's going to put in the same work as I am putting to. And this could affect somebody else's dreams, goals, initiatives. And that's something that really inspires me to this day, that I do think everybody can make a difference in their own little or big way. And I want to take time to recognize Gregory Finkhart, my advisor, Meshlan Farhad, Johnny Gammas, and Jared Farah. You really helped me a lot, and I know that you're going to help a lot of students. And I want to take time to recognize Larry Levinka. He really collaborated with me this past year. And I also want to thank Dr. Friedman for agreeing to meet with the SGA E-Board. So thank you, guys.[1670.42][1670.42](Applause).
Back to you.
Yeah. And then now I'm going to invite Kim, new and current PTK president, and Hannah, past PTK president, to the front.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Kim Gastalou. I'm the present PTK president for the upcoming academic year. Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our incoming executive board.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sultan Kahlimal, with the incoming VP of Recruitment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Peter Petrowski. I'm an information technology student here, and I'm the VP of Communications.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yuval Kipnis, and I'm the VP of Finance.
My name is Debbie Regan, and I'm the general vice president.
My name is Hannah Garcia, and I am the former president of PTK. First, we'd like to say a few thank-yous. We know Dr. Friedman has been keeping the board updated with all of our initiatives. As this is the last board meeting of the academic year, we'd like to thank all the trustees for their support, specifically Chairwoman Blakesley for attending several of our events, including our PTK induction and NJ All-Stars Ceremony. Your presence has meant a lot to our chapter and every single member. And we'd like to thank Dr. Friedman, of course, for your endless support and praise of our chapter, including coming all the way to Denver to Catalyst to receive your Paragon Presidential Award. And thank you, Dr. Fisher, I believe, yep, back there, for your encouragement and participation at many of our events. And thank you to alumni trustee Crystal Yu for your assistance throughout the year, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
I just would like to take a few minutes to highlight some of our 2021, 2022 academic highlights. The four winners of the Jack Kent Cooke this year were board members of PTK and STEM students. Interesting to note that out of the eight winners from New Jersey, four of them from Bergen. Our graduating members are transferring to impressive universities such as Columbia, Rutgers Newark, Rutgers New Brunswick, Rutgers Honors College, Boston University, and Stevens Institute of Technology. We continue to be a top 100 chapter internationally by being awarded the Continued Excellent Award. Both annual projects won awards, including Top 50 for the project with the Korean Community Center. We hosted many service and fellowship events to bring our campus community closer together. Our TerraCycle initiative, which are zero-waste receptacles for snack wrappers and disposable masks, are placed, will be placed throughout campus. We were notified last week that we are featured in this month's TerraCycle's newsletter. And we also received grant funding for six additional mask receptacles. We will be volunteering this weekend at one of our favorite community give-back events at Mivo Farms in Mawa to promote sustainability. For this coming year, we have 16 PTK board members from all academic backgrounds, STEM and including humanities. We look forward to collaborating with the administration on this year's college project, and we continue to be excited having a meaningful impact on campus as well as in our community. Thank you. And Kim, Kim, congratulations as a Coca-Cola Scholarship winner.
Okay, so today is my last board meeting, and I just wanted to share, you know, my experience as the alumni trustee and what I learned in the board in the past year. So when I first ran for the position in 2021, I felt that alumni trustee role are most critical, yet underused resources on campus, and I wanted to kind of break that barrier. So while my role is, as a trustee, is to bring or share students' perspective to the board, within the first few weeks, I realized that my understanding is very limited, that my perspective and my experience, it's just limited to my perspective and my experience at BCC. So I wanted to, and it did not really fully encompass a range of students' needs on campus. So I decided to start monthly meet and greet with students and try to attend many of the student-organized events to gain student feedback and interact with student body. So in the next two slides, I just added some photos of events that I attended. And outside of BCC, I was the member of ACCT, and I had the privilege to attend the Leadership Conference in San Diego, California, last year. And at the Congress, current students and alumni trustees had the opportunity to meet and provide insight on pressing issues facing community college students today, and such as like financial aid, mental health, and student engagement. And since trustees represent community college from different states, you can really learn how others trustees interact with their student body and what kind of programs and events they hold to make a difference in their college. And what's amazing about this committee is that immediately after the Congress, we asked ACCT to create a forum or sessions that is directly designed for students and alumni trustees in the future, as there were none at the current event. And I believe that small changes like these make a huge difference for the future. So in addition, I was also part of NJCCC Student and Alumni Committee, where we met four times a year to provide input and raise awareness on issues of importance to students and alumni leaders. And we also had many opportunities to meet with like special guests and gain their perspective on community college. So while I learned a lot during my term as alumni trustee, I just wanted to share a couple of my reflections. So while serving as the alumni trustee seems like a very straightforward role, my experience was very challenging. I believe serving as a voice of over 10,000 students is very challenging and intimidating at the same time. And since you're only serving one ear on the board, it kind of limits you onto what kind of projects or creating policies that you may want to do. So instead, what I wanted to do was I wanted to just create a foundation so that even after my term is over, I somewhat created a culture for the next alumni trustee. And similar to any representative body, I think you really have to work with the system, like such as professors, staff, admin, and students, to really successfully complete your term. So that is my reflection. Thank you.
Crystal, you've been an outstanding trustee. You hit the ground running. Your input was always very spot-on, very perceptive. So I personally want to thank you for what you've done for the board. Well done. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and President Friedman, we thank you for your service as alumni trustee, and we have a little gift. Now, my report as chairperson. May was fun at the college. Lots of celebrations, lots of parties. It's been terrific. In addition to the two events that Dr. Friedman talked about, the donor recognition, president inauguration event, and the scholarship breakfast, we also had an EOF ceremony, the Senate lunch, where Pat and I got to spend some time, some quality time with some of our faculty. The nurses' pinning ceremony, I think you were there for that one also. We also had a tutor award ceremony, graduation ceremony for their Turning Points program, which is one of my favorite programs. The commencement, of course, and the athletic awards. What I learned in attending all these events was, well, what I was able to develop was a true appreciation for the work that our faculty do, the ability of our students, and the dedication of our administration. We are, I've been at the college for a while. This is probably my 18th year. We seem to be hitting on all gears right now. It's just a beautiful thing. And I think at the Board of School estimates appointment, I guess, last week, I think it really gave us a moment to reflect on how well things are working right now. I think it's recognized not only internally with us, but by the Board of Commissioners at Bergen and the fact that we are able to put ourselves on the map in so many different ways. So thank you very much, everybody. You're terrific people. Okay. Oh, before I move on, Chinsia, would you like to make a presentation?
Good evening, Dr. Friedman, Board of Trustees, all the students and staff, and any of our community members. My name is Chinsia Diorio. I'm the interim Executive Director of Continuing Education and Workforce Development. And tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the Department of Labor WEOa Grant. And WEOa stands for Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Program. We all know by tonight's speakers specifically that at Bergen Community College, we change lives. We change lives through educating students in all our various programs. In CE, which is where I work, in this year alone, we changed 8,905 lives. And we know on the undergraduate level, and we have a lot of our peers here, you change even more lives than that every day. But when we think about changing lives at Bergen, we may not think of some of the smaller programs that we have at Bergen, not CE specific for credentials, not the degree programs, but there are some other smaller programs that really impact lives. And one of the ones that do are the one that I want to speak to you tonight. That's what we do. We change lives with this WEOa grant from the DOL. If I told you for $930, we can change somebody's lives, you might think, that's not a lot of money to change someone's life. But with this WEOa program, we have someone that comes to us not speaking any English, maybe new to this country, maybe not so new, but never had the time nor the money to learn English. And now, after going through our program, they can speak English at the grocery store. They can talk to their child's teacher, and they can actually get a job, all from this WEOa program. And that's what we do at Chiarko and now at other locations as well. And I welcome you to come to Chiarko. It is bustling now, morning, afternoon, evening, with hundreds and hundreds of students. And when I started going there a year ago to manage these programs, I thought of my parents. They came from Italy. My mother came as a 19-year-old, not knowing any English and hoboken. And she went to the ESL program there. And my grandfather did. And I said, Mom, it's just like you. Different faces, different cultures, but they all wanted the same thing. They wanted a better life for themselves and for their family and for their future family. And that's what is very exciting for me to be part of this. So let me tell you who we are down there. It is run under a Title II program funded under the WEOa program, and we started getting involved in it in 2009. Now Bergen County Technical Schools is the lead on this grant program, and they have two other partners, us at Bergen Community College and the Greater Bergen, I can't read from here, so here, let me look from here, the Greater Bergen Community Action Program. We have a staff of about 20 instructors and five administrative staff members. And I want to highlight the grant director who came tonight, Liz DeFeo. She's in the back row there. She manages this program seamlessly for us. And this year, we had our own Associate Dean of Health Professions, Maida Gonzalez-Bosch, who's also here, who helped us with the training, which is an exciting program we added on this year. The students need to be 16 years of older, and we get them by reaching out to high schools, churches, community centers. But our number way, one way of recruiting students is word of mouth. They come to us, they love the program, they tell everyone else about it. The subjects that we're able to offer through this grant are ESL, civics, workplace English, high school equivalency, and technology. So how does the student do this whole program? How do we help them change their lives? Well, we get them to come here, recruitment. They come to an orientation where we tell them all about the program, the opportunities, they meet the staff, the administration, and then we put them through testing. Because in order to place them appropriately, we need to test them. And through that testing, whether it's through ESL or the HSC program, we put them in the appropriate course. They take a six-week cycle, and then we retest them. And then they either will move up, or they'll stay the same. Because this program, one of the beautiful parts of this program is there's no time limit or funding limit. They can stay in it as long as they get to the level that they need to, to be at the lifestyle that they want to be. They want to get the higher-level job. They want to be able to read and write at a certain level. They're able to stay in it as long as they'd like to. So this year, what was exciting with the partners is we were able, they were able to add training fund dollars to actually get people a certification. So each of the three schools, we worked together, and everyone offered different certificate programs. One of our partners offered the Microsoft Office Specialist, another the ServeSafe, and we at Bergen, since we have such a strong Health Professions program, we decided to go for the Health Professions. And as I mentioned, Maida Gonzalez-Bosch, she helped us develop the ESL for Health Professions. So people who were at the intermediate or advanced level who were interested in Health Professions, we bridged them into the ESL for Health Professions program so they would learn the language, they would learn the terminology, and not be overwhelmed when they got into the EKG or the Certified Nursing Assistant Program. So from there, they were able to choose one of those two credentials. And then after that, we have our career placement manager help them with interview skills, resume, and actually securing a position. Just real quickly, one of the goals of this grant is to have these courses available all over our county. So our main hub is Chiarko. We also offer classes at our Meadowland site. We use space at the Fairlawn Middle School. We have online courses, which is what we started to do during COVID. And now with the Health Professions courses, we have some of the courses here in Paramus. So we always like to think, see the numbers and enrollment. And actual enrollment exceeded the minimum required by the grant by 27% since 2018. Just to be transparent, we excluded 2021. This segment of students really had a hard time going online. We were able to hold a few classes, but we couldn't maintain the same numbers we usually do. So 2,108 students were enrolled since 2018. It's funny how all those numbers came up in different formats, so we should probably play those numbers, 2018 tonight. So I think one of the greatest accomplishments, and I look to Liz, and I thank her for doing this, is 95% of the grant is drawn down every year since she's directed it. I'm really, really proud of that number. When we're given funds, we want to use them, and we want to serve our students. And we are 100% doing that with this program. So when we go back to that $930, with $930, which is an average of the amount of money we spent, we changed students like these lives. These are CNA students who walked into the Chiarko building not speaking any English. They walked out, speaking English, earning a credential, and now having a job as a certified nursing assistant. That's what makes me feel good at the end of the day, and I hope it does you so.
Any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. It is. Dr. Freeman just leaned over and said, that's very powerful, and that is absolutely right. All right, unfinished business. At this time, is there any unfinished business that any board member would like to raise? Okay, are there any other board members that would like to be heard? Trustee Barretto.
Yes, thank you. First of all, Crystal, you're going to be missed, I have to say. You're just amazing at everything that you do. And for me, you gave a powerful voice to students that some- And for me, you gave a powerful voice to students that some of them may have felt they didn't have one, and you were able to just bring that out to us at all times and really make them feel as a part of the campus as they should and made them feel important. So we're going to miss you, and we just thank you for all the work that you put in because it's a lot, and people don't realize that, but it's a lot that you do. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank the gentleman that spoke at the very beginning with his mother. Chris?
Chris.
In the five years and a half or so that I've been on this board, I've never turned to a total mush like I did. And it hit home, and I swear to you, I'm not exaggerating, that was the most powerful words ever coming through that mic in all the years that I've been here. And I thank you for what you said, and I congratulate you and your mother because that was beautiful. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to close the unfinished business portion. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? The unfinished business portion is now closed. Is there any new business that any board member would like to raise? Are there any board members that would like to be heard? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the new business portion.
Hello, Frank.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? The new business portion of the meeting is now closed. Open to the public. We will now open the meeting to the public for their comments. Is there a motion to open to the public? Second, please? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Microphone is now open.
I'm Tobin DiMarco, President of the Faculty Association and Professor of Philosophy at the college. This board agenda, the P resolutions, has both future-oriented resolutions and past-oriented resolutions. So first, I want to thank the board and President Friedman for our new hires. We needed them desperately, so thank you. And I also just want to thank the academic deans and Brock Fisher, Vice President of Academic Affairs, for their hard work in doing these hires and these searches. So thank you. In particular, I want to comment on Resolution P 7F. This is the retirement of Dr. George Kronk. There are three giants that are retiring tonight on your agenda. Jeffrey Sadak, who was a Professor of the Year for the entire United States a couple of years ago, Randy Forstrom, who is the Long Term Chair of the Mathematics Department and really was a leader in mathematics, and George Kronk, who is in my department, so I'm going to comment on him in particular. So I just wanted to say a few words about him. Without hyperbole, and to put it simply, Bergen Community College would not be one of the best community colleges if it weren't for George Kronk. George was hired in 1972.
Jesus Christ.
He has a PhD in philosophy, a law degree, a master's degree in history. George created the Philosophy and Religion Department here at Bergen. And as many of you know, this is an unusual thing. There's only a handful of community colleges in the United States that have philosophy departments. The department became so prestigious under him that the Chronicle of Higher Education did a story on us in the early 2000s, and National Public Radio also did a segment on our department a couple of years after that story in the Chronicle. He was Chair of the department for many, many, many years. George was the Faculty Senate Chair for many years. George was the Chair of the General Education Committee at BCC, and he also sat on the statewide General Education Committee, and he was one of the large influences, especially during the 1980s, in creating these really academically rigorous degree requirements for community colleges in the state of New Jersey. George was the Chair of the Presidential Search Committee that hired our longest-serving president, Judy Nguyen. George was the Chair of that search committee. George served as a dean at the college. George served as a union officer at the college. With Professor Mark Cassup, George started online courses at Bergen Community College. In fact, George was one, offered some of the first online courses that were offered at any community college. George served as the Chair of the Middle States Accreditation Self-Study in the 1980s. And then George hired Michael Redman, who of course is a former president as well as vice president in many areas, and Michael also served as the Middle States Chair of Accreditation in the 90s. George also hired Dr. Peter DeLugos in my department, who is a former vice president and also served as a Middle States Chair in the early 2000s. I guess I ruined that progression there, so, because I was not Chair of the Middle States, thankfully. George was an expert interpreter of the New Jersey Administrative Code for Higher Education, and in fact, he would get contacted by many, many people, including the Association of the Boards of Trustees. Many of the attorneys across the state would contact him with questions for interpreting the New Jersey Administrative Code. He took great pleasure, by the way, in that code and reading it, et cetera, one of the perhaps few people. George published several books, both monographs and textbooks, and many articles while here at Bergen, and his scholarly work spanned many different subfields. In fact, George, we were one of the first community colleges to offer an Asian philosophy course, and that was because of George. George actually published a very good book on Asian philosophy, bringing diversity to the curriculum much, much earlier than many other colleges were doing. George also played the bass guitar in a band with other BCC faculty members. They called themselves Academic Freedom, and they would often perform at many BCC functions. What a legacy. I hope that those of us who remain continue to live up to his standards, academic rigor, energy, and integrity. So those are a few words just to know who's retiring tonight, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Tobin. I will now entertain a motion to close the public. We have more.
Louise, where are you, Louise?
I apologize. I should have realized.
There's no more next month, so I have enough. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Louis DeBrao, Director of the STEM Program here at Bergen Community College. Thank you for your time. So I do have a few individuals that I want to bring to the front. Everyone, come on, let's go. Chop, 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 chop. All right, so as Dr. Friedman mentioned, and the members of the PTK group also mentioned, one of the biggest scholarships award in the U.S. announced its winners last month. But as a good STEM person, I will want to bring up a few stats. So more than 1,200 students from 332 community colleges applied for this very competitive award. And as you have heard by now, four students at Bergen were selected, more than any other community college in New Jersey by far. All four students are STEM students, but for three of them, it was not only a title and an extra line in their resume. These students participated in a very intrusive STEM research program, provided access to research opportunities, supplemental academic training through mini-courses, counseling, and more. These students became researchers, published authors, and received relevant certifications to boost their academic profiles and become top scholars. Crystal, Bertila, Eduardo, they truly represent what top scholars look like. It is important to mention that for the last nine consecutive years, Bergen has had students selected for this award. Every year, we coach them, we offer them leadership opportunities, and we open many doors for them. Combined with their dedication and impeccable academic performance, these students are destined to turn the world upside down. So Bertila, Eduardo, Crystal, once again, congratulations. I also want to take this opportunity to quickly introduce you to the new STEM Student Executive Board, who will be leading the next STEM cohort and student activities for the next academic year, 2022, 2023. Sue?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sue Isaac, and I'm a chemistry student, and I'm about to start my second year in Bergen Community College. I'm the new president of the STEM Club.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Junior Contreras. I am a mechanical engineer major, and I'm also pursuing a career in aviation. I'm proud to say that I'm going to be serving my second term as Vice President of Public Relations for the STEM Club.
Hello, I'm Mike Butrin. This is going to be my second year as an IT major here at Bergen and now as Vice President of Projects.
Hello. My name is Angel Vargas, and this is going to be my second year as a computer science major, and I'm going to serve as the Vice President of Finance.
I also want to take this opportunity to open up an invitation to all of you to possibly join us at the STEM Center at any point. We have 74 STEM student interns working with us right now, working on research projects like Bergen Routes, just like Justin mentioned earlier. Tomorrow, we are leaving to Toronto, Canada, to receive an international award that we received for one of our academic initiatives. And Monday morning, we will be heading down to Capitol Hill and compete against other community colleges in the country who were selected as semifinalists for the Community College Innovation Challenge, and we will report the findings. Most likely, we've been coaching the students, the students are very ready, the presentation is really good, and we have very high hopes that we're going to walk away with an award. So we'll report that back. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor DeBru. One of the things that is just outstanding about this college is the STEM program. Putting us on the map internationally is outstanding. I could not be prouder to be associated with this college with this kind of program. Anyone else? Okay. All right, hearing no one, I will entertain a motion to close the public portion. Is there a motion?
Hello, Frank.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Public session is now closed. At this time, may I please have a motion to accept the minutes for the May 3, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes?
Move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Maria, please take a roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Secretary Beretta?
Yes.
Chairperson Blakesley?
Yes.
Trustee Delicio?
Yes.
Treasurer Fletcher?
Yes.
Trustee Longo?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Morales Diaz?
Yes.
Trustee Paulino?
Yes.
Trustee Ranjan?
Abstained.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Silverstein is absent this evening. Alumni trustee, you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passed. Consent agenda, now on the consent agenda for approval for Tuesday, June 7, 2022. May I please have a motion to approve the following items, AF1 to AF21, ESA1 to ESA3, I1 and I2, P1A to P9, SF1. There are no resolutions for strategic planning. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Hello, Frank.
Second, please.
Second.
All right, Maria, please take a roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Secretary Beretta?
Yes.
Chairperson Blakesley?
Yes.
Trustee Delicio?
Yes.
Treasurer Fletcher?
Yes.
Trustee Longo?
Accuse myself on AF1. Yes, on all of that.
Thank you, Trustee Longo. Trustee Morales Diaz?
Yes.
Trustee Paulino?
Yes.
Trustee Ranjan?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Silverstein is absent. Alumni trustee, you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. An executive session will not be held this evening.
Thank God.
Does anyone?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Does anyone on the board wish to make a comment? Oh, well, I guess you did.
Thanks, I'm sorry. On behalf of the board, thank God.
All right. Adjournment, seeing no one else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
June 7, 2022, Meeting of the Board of Trustees is now adjourned.
Happy summer!